So we are going to open the workshop session. We have two items on today's workshop. We have our Mokey C special education program review, which we're very excited to have our representatives from Mokey C here to go over that with our board. They've already gone over that with our cabinet staff as well as our central office of special education staff. They'll go over that with the board. And then the second half will be doing our next budget workshop. So without further ado, I will turn it over and let our guests introduce themselves and we'll get rolling. So there you go.
Thank you for the invitation to be here. We appreciate it. My name is Toni Reister Wood, and I have been with Mokey C about three years. My colleague here is Cindy Anderson. And I'm recent with Mokey C. I have a background as a principal executive director of special programs for many years.
Okay, so you've got the report in front of you. You actually have a Cliff Notes version of the report. It's not the full report. That would have been a lot of paper. So we'll just briefly touch on this, kind of give you the big picture and some next steps. So we do realize that leading school improvement is very difficult. It's hard work. It's also powerful and important work. And so we approached this study as kind of an open, honest inquiry. We did a number of different tools and methodology to look through, to evaluate the program overall. There's a reason we don't use the word audit, because this was not an audit. It was simply a programmatic review. So some of the information that we used for our data was examining a number of district level documents, your RTI process, your special education referral information, like how many students are referred, how many students are found eligible, how many students do not qualify, which indicates, you know, the kinds of referrals that you're getting. Campus and district special education data from enrollment data each time a group of students moves campuses, to data, STAR, achievement data, all kinds of data. We looked at discipline data and we looked at staffing data, all relative to special education programming. We did a walkthrough, we did walkthroughs of a number of campuses. There were four individuals from Mokey C who were here in district and we were here for about three days. And we were everywhere, met with lots of folks. It was a really good experience. We had structured interviews with district curriculum and instructional leadership. We had an interview with district special education leadership. Dawn was tremendously helpful facilitating everything. We also did focus groups where we had stratified random groups of people. So we just recommended a way to select staff so that it was just a random group. And these groups were by category. So we met with principals and assistant principals, gen ed, English Language Arts or RLA, math teachers, special education inclusion and resource teachers, special education parent professionals. And then there were some other staff, some appraisal staff and other staff that were kind of sprinkled in some of those other groups just because of the schedules. So all of that, we take that data and we triangulate it. So we look for themes that occur in at least three places or more. So that helps us to see if it's actually going to be a theme of some sort. So some strengths and celebrations. Your current special education leadership team has, they've done a lot. And this program is new. We understand that this is new for Argyle ISD to actually have students that you're serving. And so there's, there are going to be some growing pains. So we do think it's, it's a huge benefit that you're proactively working at programming and comparing that to research-based programming. Students that we saw were receiving their services by actively engaged staff. We were very excited. Every time we went to a different campus, the principals knew their special education students. They knew the teachers. They knew where the programs were located. We're obviously very, very involved in the programming. That's a really positive thing. The instructional leadership is definitely there. All of the focus groups and folks that we interviewed and met had very, reported very respectful and supportive relationships with the special education department. And the staff reported that they really value the collaboration that takes place between general education and special education. And so those are all really positive things. You've seen this slide before. We did the staffing study a few months back. And this, the top part of the slide is probably what you've seen, which indicates something that's not new to anyone in this room or in the community, that you're growing exponentially. But what that means is that your special education numbers are also growing. So if you look at those bottom two charts, they, the first one is enrollment by student groups and the second one is enrollment by student programs. The yellow highlighted bar is the rate of special education growth. And this is only up to 2023 taper. And so your numbers are even higher than that. So, so you can see, the fact is that you're growing exponentially. But the other thing is, is that with the, what used to be kind of the artificial cap of special education, since that has been lifted or acknowledged, that is also opening the doors so folks feel, I think, more free to identify students if they, they have a need and are eligible. And then also including dyslexia students under that umbrella is another reason why these numbers are continuing to climb and grow in special education.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, I mean, is it based on those last comments, are you saying that you're seeing this kind of growth or this increase in special ed population in most districts that have growth like Argyle?
Yeah, yeah, yes. If you're growing in enrollment, it's highly likely you're also growing in students with special needs. The difference here in Argyle is that you have a relatively low percentage of economically disadvantaged students. So oftentimes districts that have higher economically disadvantaged students, their special education numbers will grow more than yours.
So that's the unique aspect of Argyle, low socioeconomic population but high special ed.
High growing. And we, we actually put it into context here on this next slide. So this slide demonstrates special education. The green bar is the state enrollment for special education. The blue bar is Argyle ISD. So if you look at those bars, so 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, that was sort of the artificial cap that wasn't a cap. I kind of say that tongue in cheek because, you know. So that cap was lifted and then you kind of see the state's numbers are really starting to go up. You guys are below the state. That's, and so you're not over identifying kids. And it's, it's within, you know, proportion of your, the growth of your enrollment overall.
So how does our, you know, you mentioned that special education numbers are increasing. Looks up about 10% total. But you also mentioned that there's several other source, resource or sources putting them into special education. So what does our breakdown? Because I know there's a lot, there's manpower intensity with certain levels versus others. And how does that play?
Yeah, you're exactly right. I don't have that in here, but we can certainly get it. I'm sure Dr. Ruggles, that would be easy to do a breakdown of the percentage of the different areas.
What are you trying to get to, how do you understand the question?
So, you know, if it's dyslexia, but it's also part of their, because they're in special education. Well, they don't need one-on-one attention. Whereas some other, where spare cases do, and there's a budgetary impact and a manpower impact. It'd be nice to know kind of of our 510, what portion is what?
The disability. Yes, the disability. Yes, that's what we do. Yeah, and that, actually, that is a larger form. It isn't a larger form, yes. And it does, you can't really run a ratio like you can for general education. You can't say, you know, 22 to 1 because the needs have to be. So that's why we do things like we compare it to the state rate, the region, and then comparison districts. And we have that, we have that next here.
Still a question for you. Do you have any, I don't know in the rest of the packet, but the 10.6 and the 10.3 percentage of the population the last two years obviously is a drop from 1, 2, 3, at least the three years prior, no, two years prior to that. Do you have a thought about that? Just curious.
That, you know, you, my understanding is that's when you started, you brought students to, back to Argyle ISD after being in a co-op with Devon. I don't know if there was an option for students to stay in Devon. I don't know what the arrangements were. But you're right, it does, it does.
But that's also a percentage of your total enrollment. So as your total enrollment goes up, that number's still higher even though it's a lower percentage.
The number's increased every year. It's just the percentage decreased.
Because your general population is growing faster.
It's growing faster than the same percentage of special ed.
Twenty-one, we were coming out of COVID as well.
True.
And that gives chunks of all districts.
Yeah, thank you. So this next slide, this includes your, the comparison districts. And we used the same comparison districts that were selected for the staffing study. It just made the most sense to do that. And so again, you can't really use a ratio with special education, but you can certainly compare your number of staff to other districts, the state, the region. But those districts are similar to you in size and demographics. And so Argyle is on the very left. Region 11 is towards the right and the state is on the right. So that bar, that kind of dotted line that goes across represents just region 11. And you can see where Argyle falls relative to region 11 and your comparison districts. So you're not the highest and you're not the lowest. You're, you're really kind of in the, in the middle. So interestingly, the perception in district is that you're understaffed. And so we'll talk a little bit about that. We believe it's just the way staff is being utilized currently, the current programming model. So we'll talk a little bit about that. And so now I'm going to pass this over to Cindy.
Okay, so after we did our district visit, we discussed what buckets, so to speak, that our findings fell in. And it was instructional SPED practices, continuum of services, and professional development. So to start, the instructional SPED practices. I do want to say your life skills programs are unbelievable. Your high school life skills program, and I've seen so many over the years, it was just outstanding. So you all could be very, very proud of that, that room. So let's see. The high school life skills, okay. Maximizing special education student performance may require a philosophical shift that reinforces the understanding that all students are general ed students first. And special education programming is characterized by services versus labels and places. It's important to not run a parallel program to your general ed and your SPED. You want them included and you want there to be a, a general district belief in that. Every child is general ed. And that's where we start. We start with that least restrictive environment before we start going down to specific programs.
I'm just going to cut in for a minute. This is not unusual to have parallel systems. Having a district sort of get rid of a parallel system takes effort, huge effort on the part of general education and special education.
Sharing that ownership.
You can't really blame or fault either one. It's just got to be an intentional initiative in the district in order to get there.
Thank you, ma'am. So we did find that special ed programming lacked continuity among your campuses. As students progress through the system and attend the next campus, students' instructional arrangements substantially change depending on the services that the campus offered. And we know that we can't say we don't offer that. We have to provide what a student needs.
Can I go back one portion, just clarifying on, looking at the continuity among campuses and, but also going back and looking at the, a parallel system or a separate system? Is that one of the growing pains of having been in a co-op for a majority of the district being part of a co-op and then transitioning to its own special education program? And, and knowing what our students are receiving from the co-op and then starting our program?
It's absolutely a huge part of it.
Okay.
And it's also having teachers work together in a co-teach type of a setting is also now being shown as being a really effective and efficient use of staff, but also really good for students because they then have access to the general education curriculum, the content expert, et cetera. And at the end of the day, the majority of our special education students are going to have to take and pass.
They take the same STAR that the general ed students take.
At the end of the day, and not all of them. There's a percentage that, that can and should be eligible for an alternative assessment, but the majority.
But that's, yeah.
That's a small percentage, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we also had several campuses here, not all, that had content mastery centers. The high school had two, one for reading and one for math. And this type of programming is not research-based and it's not an effective use of staff. So, and CMC also fosters that mindset that special education is a place and not a service. And special ed is a service, not a place. Feedback and current programming reveal that Argyle lacks a culture of shared ownership between general and special education for the achievement of all students. We just, we found that there was, you know, well, they're going to get serviced by the SPED teachers instead of collaborating together.
So general education is working really hard and special education is working really hard. And so we've just got to sort of bring it together is really kind of in a nutshell what's, what's going on.
Have you, I'm sure it's few and far between, but have you seen other districts that have done the same thing, leave a co-op? And, you know, I know there, like I said, there are probably few and far between more maybe in the rural areas.
Actually, it's more common than you would realize. Yes, yes. So I live in San Antonio and we had a number of military school districts that co-opted together. But then as the bases grew and folks weren't able to be, live on base housing, those programs often went back to the school districts. Right. And shirt civilo, S U C I C. I was, I was in that district for a number of years.
So have you seen successful transitions? I would hope so. Because that's the goal.
This is going to be one.
This is going to be.
Absolutely.
I was just saying, you know, to, as a model or, you know, a district that we can, you know, that you can always communicate with.
Right.
Say, how did this work for you? How did you, you know, get past this, this hump, if you will? Not for lack of a better term, but this, this, you know, barrier or something like that to kind of open it up.
Yep.
Okay.
They have some school districts that they've shared. Need to reach out to.
Awesome, yeah. I think that'd be great, okay.
And I do want to say that often the largest barrier is your leadership and what their belief and style is. And the staff, when we did our focus groups, the very first bullet here is they identified that there was a need for a district-wide inclusion model. So you've already achieved the first hurdle, which is they already identified that they felt that they should see that.
That's great, okay.
So in their current location, your ECSC programming lacks the opportunity for inclusion with same age peers. And that's going to be important for them to have, to be able to include into the pre-K classrooms or kinder classrooms. The district currently serves the 18-plus population within the high school life skills class, indicating these students may be on the high school campus for up to eight years. Plus, there are so many wonderful things you can do with the 18-plus class if they're separated from that high school group instead of, you know, maybe repeating coursework and stuff that the other kids are doing.
What do you typically see in other districts for that specific population? That's a great question.
So I started the 18-plus in La Porte. And what we saw was the ability for that teacher to take the kids out to, this is just an example, out to the bus and ride public transportation to a job. And, and be monitored during that, our belief. And as it should be for an 18-plus student, their last day in Argyle ISD should look like their first day for the rest of their lives. And we, we're trying to bridge that for them, either through employment or even if it's a facility that they would benefit from, helping the parents going with them to interview facilities so that they can know where their child will be best placed after Argyle.
And we understand from Dr. Ruggles that there, there are opportunities that students in the high school setting, that they do go out and they have job placements and supports and all of that. But we've seen where most of your 18-plus population don't even really go attend the high school at all for a couple of reasons. One, their programming is very different. The other is that you could potentially have students who are, you know, 20, 21, 22 in a classroom with somebody who's potentially 14 or 15. So, yeah.
And we start transitioning, what, at 11?
You start transition planning. Yeah, planning.
Well, at, from their age 14 or you're discussing transition.
14, yeah. So this just becomes an early on preparation for all of that leading up to high school?
Yeah, and it can be jobs, it can be volunteer positions. But definitely, you know, creating a budget, shopping, male prep, just all of those life kinds of skills that they're going to need for their long-term.
Okay, let's see. The next bullet was that staff reported that campuses currently have a practice of pulling SPED staff to cover classes for which there's no substitute. This practice has the potential to compromise student IEP minutes and disrupt programming. So when you have an English classroom that the teacher didn't show up and we can't get a sub, that SPED teacher that doesn't have a student load by a schedule, so to speak, is often pulled in. And that teacher is covering required IEP minutes. So that prevents them from doing that. Then we noticed that MTSS was not referenced and that response intervention was referenced, which is typically limited to academic interventions. MTSS also has behavioral and such. Special education case loads, including dyslexia. Staff was saying that they can be overwhelming and difficult to manage for some of them. The SPED staffing profile is above that of the state and region, which we just saw in the graph. And it's consistent with peer groups, indicating Argyle ISD is not over or understaffed in special ed. However, the current programming model and the use of and organization of special education staff could be improved. So all the focus groups also mentioned a need first. Yeah, my question is.
The, so this is, this last bullet point here is interesting because one of the, one of the many great things Dr. Carpenter has done since she's been here is she's asked, she's taken us on board meetings every spring and fall, or fall and spring. And I will tell you, my experience has been as I walk through the different campuses is there's not, there's no more consistent feedback that I've gotten from the administration and the staff is that we have challenges in this area spent. And so I was, my expectation was is when I, when we go through this process that you were going to come back and say, man, we are way understaffed. And one of the challenges we were having in budget year was how are we going to meet this need that we're hearing about so consistently? How are we going to offer them more support? And so, do I understand you're saying it's not a staffing problem? It's just a, it's a resource issue, how you're using those.
It's usage utilization of staff.
What I was hearing on our walkthroughs was the overload of the administration on the specific paperwork for these students. That the principal who's in charge of general education was having to do an enormous amount of work on that paperwork. That's why I do think there is some niceties to having more of a specialized focus on this and a parallel focus, especially on the paperwork. Because you're, they're spending 30% of their time on 2% of their students. And so that's where I would like to see some feedback or some improvements to protect.
But my question goes back to, I mean, for the, the people on the frontline, the teachers in the classroom, the people in the building, are they going to agree with this assessment? Because it certainly didn't sound like it when I was walking through those hallways.
Because I just don't think they, they just don't know.
Are they sitting there right now watching this meeting going, oh my gosh, I cannot believe they think that?
And they might until they understand it better and get professional development to see what the shift is going to be in, in that utilization of that staff. And then I think they will breathe.
Down the line, I'd say two to three years down the line, I think both your, your, because folks were overwhelmed. Folks, there were folks that got teary-eyed in some of the focus groups with us, the teachers. But I think you'll find in a couple of years down, down the line that both general education and special education will feel some relief because they're going to be working more hand in hand. Right now, they're almost working against each other. For example, if you have a staff member that is supporting an elementary school and they're supporting general education, students that are in general education, you would want to organize that staff. Say you've got two resource teachers or two teachers. You would organize one teacher so he or she would just support reading all day, throughout the day and through all of the grade levels. And the other teacher would teach, would support math. That way they can then go to the, the general education curriculum for RLA or math, and then they eventually become a content expert. Then as a gen ed teacher with 21, 22 kids in my classroom, then I'm going to have an additional adult to also help me meet the diverse needs. And that additional teacher can not only help the students that we've purposely put in there for special education, but potentially any other student who may be struggling, student with 504 or someone in the, in the hopper, you know, the RTI process. So it takes time, it's a shift, it's a, it's a big shift.
I think, though, it was a little shocking to me as well because that's not what I expected here based on what we saw. But if I think back to those two, I think those were in specific campuses, the instances that I'm thinking of, and not so much in the other similar classification campuses. So it could just be that, that it's a reallocation of resources among that classification campus. Because I think this is a, this is a general statement about the whole program. This is not a, you know, the watch you're talking about. We saw it in specific places, but I didn't see it in every place.
So all focus groups, this is the professional development findings. They all mentioned a need for specific professional development for administration, teachers and parent professionals to better support students with special needs by enhancing continuity of programming across the district. So they were asking for the professional development to this gentleman's point. I think they were, they were asking, they're going to receive it much better. I think it's going to be, oh man, we asked for it, we're getting it. Not, oh, they're making us, you know, do this again. Central office leadership and staff also noted the need for professional learning, for behavioral supports and interventions and research-based instructional practices, authentic student engagement, and differentiated strategies to support all learners. So we took all of those focus groups and we put what was said and what we observed in that, in this report. Para educators reportedly do not have access to the beginning of the year professional development. This is a missed opportunity to engage all staff in best practices, collaboration and coordination. You know, our para educators are often in those classrooms supporting students. So they also need to be professionally developed and instruct. So they also need to be professionally developed in instructional strategies. There does not appear to be an intentional professional development plan designed to provide specific learning for all educators of students with special needs, but you will see that we've addressed that in our recommendations. So, to start our recommendations, establish an instructional mission, vision and value that connects to the district strategic plan by a prioritization of high-quality teaching, learning and programming across all campuses. So, this is to get that continuity that we talked about. And then we need to consider implementing a more student-centered decision-making process, accelerated learning techniques, and a research-based and inclusive staffing model that will maximize efforts to include more students in the general ed setting with support to the greatest extent appropriate. Additionally, an even more student-centered model will facilitate a systemic use of staff. There's also so much research, y'all, on acceleration versus remediation. And often when we pull children from the general ed class, we are remediating and not accelerating. Consider eliminating content mastery centers and repurpose that staff to support students in a content, co-teach, or support facilitation role. Promote shared ownership and responsibility for all student groups. For school leaders to accomplish this, they must be informed and knowledgeable of legal requirements and effective practice standards. All stakeholders need necessary background information. We can't tell a school administrator, you can't do that, that's breaking the law. We need to show them the law, refresh them with the law, so that those mistakes don't happen. There's a need to place programs on campuses that have some age fear, same age fears. Least restrictive environment cannot be provided if those opportunities for inclusion aren't there. And then, for our final recommendations?
So, right, so we just recommend that, again, closer attention be given to students that least restrictive environment is a reality, and there are steps and processes that can, can get you there. This also encourages the shared ownership between general and special education students. A student-centered master scheduling process needs to be established in all grade levels. And then technical assistants can assist with that. It just takes one time and folks will have it and, and can do that moving forward. There are tools and a number of different things that, that can help with, with several of these things. And then, organize transition meetings each spring, early summer, just with campus administration. There was a lot of conversation that receiving schools, because of your facilities here, kids have a number of different transitions, and receiving schools just wanted a little lead time with the students coming. And so that, that's gonna be important as well.
To know what worked with them, and so they're not recreating the wheel with the students. And the students aren't having to go, oh my gosh, they should already know, but I need X, Y or Z, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And then, yeah, and then that's, that's really it. We just wanna give props and kudos to your superintendent and your central office leadership team for taking positive proactive steps for special education programming. This is one area we have to get right, and you guys are really leaning into it.
You know, it kinda reminds me a little bit of, of like ESL in schools. I know districts look for, some require that your gen ed teachers have ESL certification. And there's, you know, separate thing for that. To get a specialized certification is a whole other ball of wax. But it's the same idea that, you know, ESL, a lot of it is inclusion. A lot of it is teachers going into the classroom, a lot of it is teachers supporting, ESL teachers supporting gen ed teachers on what are best practices to work within your classroom, which honestly are best practices for all kids, in my opinion, but. And I think if we look at it from a special ed vantage point in a similar type model, you know, where we start educating, and I know I can hear all the gen ed teachers out there, cause I've been one. I can hear it, it's like, oh gosh, another thing, we have to do another thing. But honestly, I think in, in the end, I think it makes it easier for everybody, and it's just going through that transition and understanding that all kids are our kids. And everybody's kinda got a little bit of their specialty, and, you know, and I know we put a lot on the gen ed teachers, but if they know they have support and they're trained, I, I think, you know, over time, kind of just like, you know, like I said, it kinda, it's kin to ESL in a way.
Right, it has the potential to increase teacher efficacy and their feelings about their job and what they're doing, and they're doing it well. But also it has huge opportunity to continue to maintain and increase student achievement for all students.
Have those studies been given to our staff? That you're referring to, you know, as far as the differentiation of inclusion and others?
Yeah, there's.
So we do have those studies available to us?
Recommendations, yeah, in the, in the actual report.
So the actual studies are there, okay.
So one of the recommendations is the content mastery, I just wanna make sure I understand. So I have a child that's dyslexic and been pulled out of class for, you know. Are you saying to services, you're not saying eliminate, that's not content mastery?
That's not content mastery, you're talking about, you're talking about language therapy, dyslexia therapy.
Okay, that's, that's not.
Typically, content mastery is, is used for students to finish one through ten, or if they have trouble with one through ten, they would go down to another classroom and get support. And so that kinda begs the question, why should they leave the classroom to go somewhere else to get help with one through ten? So that's why they're leaving the classroom, and that's why you have an RLA and a math one, because it's, if, if students know they can leave and get help, then they're gonna leave and get help for social studies and science, and eventually you will have a classroom full of students for content, I mean, a zillion content areas that all need help, and no one's gonna get help. Or they pull them for small group testing, but it becomes twenty-five students for small group testing.
Larger group than they want.
Than they want, so.
Content mastery has been kind of out of the, the process and continuum for about ten years, if not more.
It was, it was really big in the, in the nineties, it's kind of, yeah.
You still saw a little bit of it ten, fifteen years ago, but just don't see it.
So the thing I think that's important to me, and I don't know about the others, but one, I believe you told us, you know, I think we get a million dollars in student allotment for special education, and we're spending a million and a half.
Spending quite a bit more than our.
Yeah, like, it's like fifty percent more than we're actually receiving, and, and so what I hear, what Casey's saying is it's not necessarily, you're allocating enough money to the program. It's just how you're spending it and where you're spending it. And so, Dr. Carpenter, the thing for me is, is that, you know, we walked around and we said, hey, we're, Dr. Carpenter's taking a hard look at this, you know, and we're bringing in consultants, and we hear you, and I think you're gonna see some changes, and I think maybe the expectation was, is the change they would see would be more money and more support. Is this gonna be well received? I mean, is this, is this gonna be well received by the people in the trenches? That we've lived up to the promise that we, that they?
I think it's all in the communication of it, because I think you have to have, you know, this, this conversation started with them, obviously with our team, Dr. Ruggles and his team. And so now, after you've seen it, we'll be able to sit down and have those conversations, because they were, they all knew they were in district, they knew they were studying, so yes, absolutely, they're anxious to see. And a lot of times, you know, especially in a fast-growth location, when you don't have a specific staffing formula, you just add people because you're reactive to the need, but not necessarily adding people is necessarily solving the problem. Because sometimes you have too many people in the room, and you're like, I should, you know, you don't, you aren't addressing the actual issues. Just when they talked a little bit about the, the response to intervention, not having a true, full-on MTSS yet, we've been working more on the academic interventions versus the behavioral. We all know since 2020, behaviors are on the rise, and a lot of our, a lot of our, the disabilities are now behavior-related. So this won't be a quick fix by any means. I've asked our experts in the field, because I do, not only are they with MOC, they came out of this field. I mean, that's what they've done their entire career, to help us look at a, potentially a three-year plan. It's gonna take time to right the ship and get us turned. And Dr. Ruggles, they've been great, his team's been great, they recognize some of the same things, they just didn't know how to get the help for it. And so we have to continue that process, and, you know, you're, when you've been doing things one way, it does take philosophical shift, and that's where we're gonna have to start with that piece. In fact, in a minimum budget workshop, we'll talk a little bit about those restricted certifications. That's what we mean by CM lab. So we've got FTEs tied up with a special ed and PD-only cert, that can't go into a, a co-teach math classroom at the high school, because there's no math cert. So we've gotta get some more certifications on that, so staff to go in and help do the very things that are the best practices.
Do, do any of these recommendations require board action?
Some of them may, depending on, as we start moving through it, some of them could potentially, yes. Once, because there, there's a lot, there are a lot of recommendations, the PD and everything shouldn't, when it comes to any type of staffing or increased positions, we will absolutely.
But I mean, eliminating content mastery, that's not a board decision.
No, that's programmatic, that's district administrative.
How you use the personnel, not really a board decision.
And just like the EXC classroom, the, the classroom that needs their age-appropriate peers, the board doesn't have to approve us moving that location to the pre, the campus has pre-K. I mean, we just, those are internal administrative moves. So a lot of this we can take care of administratively as we work through, and kind of chunk that into which phase, this phase, that phase, that phase, cause the CM phase even, it's a bigger issue to even get phased out, because so many kids have it in their art paperwork. So it's a whole matter of phasing it out of arts, which is probably another year down the road. So every, you can't just fix something overnight, I mean, it's a process.
I mean, you wouldn't wanna take something away like CM without replacing it with something else.
Right, and so we've gotta build what that is, where we can take something away.
CM is actually even a big burden on the classroom teacher, because they always had to provide the CM teacher with lesson plans, copies of whatever it is they were doing that week, and it was a lot of preparation for them to help prepare the CM teacher. So I think, in the long run, I think it's really gonna be easier for everybody, although at the start, it doesn't quite look that way.
Right. So really, our next steps will be, Dr. Jordan, Dr. Ruggles will work on the communication side of this with our staff, on our campuses, our principals, our teachers, support, the, the support staff to go over these things. And then we've asked MOC to kinda help us with potential three-year, kind of a, a plan of how we can address these findings. There's findings or recommendations that can't be done in one year, no way. So we've gotta, we've gotta build a plan for that.
And there's, there's more fine-tuned recommendations that are not on this paper, right? Okay, I can't take much out of this, but you guys have seen the fine-tune. So there's a, a true roadmap?
There will be, there will be, yes. This is, this is the, the seventy-five thousand point, yes.
Helicopter ride.
Yeah, there you go.
Any other questions?
We appreciate y'all coming north.
It's been a pleasure working with your campuses and.
Thank you, absolutely. We appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
And we will switch over to our, right off topic, workshop. Oh, yeah.
Okay, so we are on our fourth, is this the fourth budget workshop? Third, we're on the third.
I'm counting with my fingers here.
Third budget, yes, February, March, April. So here we are, we are in April, so the six. So just a reminder, we had our March workshop, we talked about, and that was coming off of the staffing study done with Dr. Graham and MOC Casey, so we kinda worked through some of that. We're gonna have some additional revenue generation ideas, we're continuing our rat sizing piece. We are going to talk about where we have, where, where we have saved through attrition to this point, and then kind of our next steps and direction we need from the board. I know you have seen this as a board, but I think it's important that we don't lose the context every time we have a workshop, because these are recorded and they're out for others to see, why we're here. And we all, and first of all, I do wanna thank, we do have Lyle Drescher here from Dr. Stuckey's office, Representative Stuckey's office, so thank you for being here. Will anybody else come in? I'll just say, okay, thank you for being here, I just wanted to make sure, because we continue to have conversation with our legislators, and they are very interested in what's going on here. And so if they're not here in person, they're sending someone, or asking us to send our videos and our, and our presentations. So I wanted to make sure I recognize that. But just to kind of tell you, you know, remind everyone how we got here, I think it was said earlier, we ranked forty-second in the country in per pupil state public yet, I think that was stated during a public comment earlier today, and that is true. The basic allotment hasn't been changed since 2019, we're still sixty-one, sixty-first student. We have a record surplus at the state, and four special sessions later, we still have no increase. So the money's there, it's sitting there, and it just not ha, it has not been released to Texas public schools as we all progress through our budget process for the twenty-four, twenty-five. You all know, as a board, we've met with every campus, every campus has heard the same message, we are faced with a four-point-six-million-dollar budget deficit, and that's eight percent of our budget. Six percent of that number is the formula transition grant that is expiring, it's a funding cliff for us. That but formula transition grant was for less than two-hundred districts originally in 2019, and here we are, about eight, we're about one of eighty left, we're very, kind of a unicorn, because we're fast growth, but yet we have this huge funding cliff. So that four-point-six is hitting us hard, when a lot of districts are three, three to four percent of their, of their total budget. So we're, we're facing some, you know, some, some extenuating circumstances, little no supplemental support on our campuses. We're lacking some provisions and some things that we're gonna have to really rat size and then rebuild. That's kind of the mantra we've, we've adopted internally, is rat size and rebuild, and what that looks like in the next three years. On a per pupil allotment, we're looking at that funding cliff to be about six, fifty to seven-hundred dollars per student, less next year than we're operating right now. We have been meeting with North Texas area superintendents and CFOs, that's just a list of the groups that have been together. We've been meeting pretty much every four to six weeks, I believe. It's been an incredible experience, because we all are in the same boat, even though some of our boats look a little bit different, we're learning and leaning on each other, and so we're trying to stay unified in that, so that's just a list, we may have missed a few, but those are the, kind of the ones that we've been with the, off and on the whole time. And so really, our continued challenge that Ms. Stewart's gonna take us through, and Dr. Jordan is gonna talk a little bit, Mr. Daniel as well, that we're facing building the next two budgets without any additional revenue, because the next legislative session doesn't start till January of twenty-five. And at best, it'll be concluded in June of twenty-five with, in potential special sessions, just like we experienced this time. We don't have any indication there's a special session right now between now and January. Obviously, if there is, then we would be thrilled for something, but we don't have any indication of that at this time. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Stewart.
Liz, you've been warning about it since I got on the board, this was the, I'm getting, this was the doomsday, you were saying. I didn't know what the funding cliff was or what FTG meant, but you were telling us, and we were all thinking this was not gonna be a, oh, it's gonna work itself out.
But we all, you know, all thought on this last legislative session, hey, it's gonna work itself out, there's all this surplus at the state, they're gonna recognize public education and the needs since 2019, but.
And every state representative, from Senator Parker to all our House reps, told us the same thing. Is that, oh, it's gonna get worked out, the money's there, the money's there, so, here we go.
All right, so a couple of these are.
It's still, it's still earning interest, and it's tied into one particular thing.
It is sitting there. So a couple of these, again, are just recaps, to remind you while we're here. General fund revenue, just a reminder, the basic allotment has not been increased since 2019. You know, there's been no funding for schools, no funding increases then, and everybody always wants to know, how, how are you, your budget's growing every year? Well, we're a growing district, funded per student, so our revenue does increase every year when those new students come in. Our problem right now that we're looking at is that in twenty-four, twenty-five, we flatten. I mean, that's mainly with the formula transition grant, funding cliff there. But if we were to continue with our expenses as we have in the past, they would continue to rise. And so we do have a deficit there that we're looking at, as Dr. Carpenter mentioned, eight percent, which is, is rather large for us. I will tell you that when we first started talking about this, as far as a workshop, in February, this seemed, you know, daunting, we were like, you know, we, we aren't really sure how we're gonna get there at this point. You'll see a few more smiles right now, we, we have a little bit better feeling about it, we've made a lot of progress, and you'll see that as we work through here. It's not perfect, and we aren't all the way there, but it's better than, than where we were a few months ago.
And we're not, we're not satisfied, so don't get that message.
Yeah.
We're just, we're just, yeah, we're.
One of the concerns I have is they're saying, oh, see, you could do, see, you could do it. But what they don't know is they didn't get the email from the teachers and the interventionists and the specialists and the people that are complaining. I mean, we're getting there, but there, it's coming at a cost.
It's not changing the fact that these are very difficult conversations, very difficult decisions. These are changes that we would not be making necessarily if the funding was there.
Uh, what's best for the student is to have all of the positions that we've had in the past. And have all of the resources that we've had in the past. But we don't have that luxury, so we're having to make those difficult choices right now.
And it's affecting morale.
Right. It is.
And I will.
And to not run elementary twenty-two to one. Like we have the classrooms, if we had the budget, we could have smaller elementary class sizes.
Right, and you mean like eighteen or twenty, yeah. Well, and, and the, the other, the other piece of that is, I mentioned a little bit ago, without, I mean, we're, it's allowing us to really look at our resources, our staffing resources. And make sure we have a, we're using a staffing formula and that we have them in the right lane, if you will, for what our goals and priorities are. Um, because in no fault of anyone, when you have a fast growth district, you're responding to growth. And if somebody needs something, you wanna help them, you wanna give it to them. And so now we're in this position where we've added positions for those very reasons without a true staffing formula. And now we're having to, to address that, so.
We're finding roses amongst the thorns.
Mm-hmm, yes.
We are trying to.
So just to recap of where we're at as of the last, uh, budget workshop, these were the projected savings that we had come up with. Um, and we had, uh, come in as a, just under two-point-five million. Of that four-point-six is where we were at, um, as far as funding reductions as of March. What we're looking at, um, this time, we're still continuing that, um, staffing efficiency study with Mo Casey. We're looking at summer school, uh, job description audit on all classroom FTEs, our class sizes. Um, as, uh, Mr. Daniel, um, spoke to earlier about the elementary, we're not changing from twenty-two to one at this point in time. Um, but we are needing to look at our middle school and high school and our master schedule efficiencies for the underutilized personnel. Um, what we're still looking at for May is, uh, our staff development and travel plans. Um, transportation department review, we talked about, we've had that with, uh, TASBO and we'll have some more details on that for you in May. Um, we're gonna look more at our special education program review, um, that you just heard tonight. Uh, some software reviews and then zero-based department budgeting. We talked about that our departments and campuses budgets were changing a little. Um, department, I mean, campuses are based on allocations and we made some reductions there, but our departments are gonna be zero-based. They've actually been working on those and actually had those due as of last Thursday when we left, um, for the long weekend. So we'll be looking through those and meeting with each one individually and reviewing them. And we'll have more information in our May meeting on that and where there might be some efficiencies that we can find in those departments.
Can you, if everybody does or doesn't understand zero-based, I mean, I do, but just for the general.
Sure.
Cause it's a different philosophy.
It is, so in the past, we've always been, you know, hey, your department had this much last year, we're growing, you know, you might get a few percentage more. Right, or there may be some need that you show that you need more. What we've asked them to do this year is to go line by line, in every line, you have to have a justification. So, um, for instance, if there is a large, uh, supply account, well, what's included in that supplies? Yes, do we know that some things are gonna come up throughout the year, yes, but what is, you know, if you're gonna put a five thousand dollar or just a small department in this one location, what does that include? What are you estimating that that's gonna come out of there? Um, and so they're having to detail each one of those line items in more depth than what they've had in the past. Um, if it's something more of a, um, you know, we think that there's gonna be fifty students served in this certain department. It's cost this much per, um, whatever review it might be, and that's our budget that we're working with. So there's gotta be a justification by line of each, um, departmental budget.
Will you remind me, Liz, if you added up all the departmental budgets, what would that be?
No, look at that.
What I wonder is, is it ten million, so if they say ten percent, that's a million, what is that total nugget?
It would not be ten million, I do not believe.
So it's like a slush.
But I was trying to get that sent it to you, make a note.
I'm just curious.
So when we're talking about departmental budgets, you're, you're, so some of them off the top of my head would be, um, our special education department. Um, athletics, fine arts, um, transportation, maintenance, um, student nutrition, um.
It's actually, it doesn't include any personnel.
Technology.
Yes. Labor services, technology, all of those.
And none of this includes any personnel costs, it's just.
These are not personnel costs, these are, these are everything outside of personnel.
So this is in that twenty percent?
That's correct.
Eighty percent personnel, this is somewhere in that.
This is in that twenty percent, not all of the twenty percent, um, because some of those are campus budgets, which we don't allocation, but part of that. Right. So we also gone through looking at some additional revenue, um, generation ideas. Um, are there areas that we could bring in more dollars? So the largest available area of more dollars is a VADER, a voter-approved tax rate election. So this would actually go to the voters. Um, there is a process that's in place for the board to consider before they were to call, um, an election. Back in two thousand twelve, we actually held, it was called a T R E at that point in time, same thing. Um, and we went to the voters and they approved it for ten cents. So every district has seventeen cents that are available to them. Um, some of them you can approve without an election, I believe up to four pennies and with some places a fifth penny. But basically anything over that requires, um, board action and then voter approval. So in twelve, we asked our voters for ten pennies and they, um, did approve that, so we have seven pennies remaining. Um, what that would do for us is it would net us an additional two and a half million dollars per year.
If we went all the way to seventeen?
If we went all the way to seventeen, if, if we ask for those additional seven pennies. So in the past, you could hold, uh, a VADER, back in twelve, you could hold it at any point, you could call an election for any day, right? Then it moved to, it had to be either in May or November. And now our only option allowed by the state is in November. Well, we all know that this year is a presidential election, it's a very, um, if it follows along the last few years, a very negative feeling at the polls. Um, it may or may not be the best time to take a VADER to the public. Um, but if we were to, to look at that, I think we, it's worth talking about, cause it is two and a half million dollars in additional revenue. Um, by July fifth, um, we would actually have to select an auditor and we'd have to go through an efficiency audit. And there's rules set out by the state, um, and then the board would have to call that election by August nineteenth. Which actually falls as the date of our August night, uh, our August regular board meeting. And then in October, you have to publish the, uh, findings of the, uh, efficiency audit. Um, and then you have the election in November. So you're gonna plan the budget, even if we recommend this and the board chooses to move forward with this, you're planning the budget without that additional revenue clue. Cause you won't know for several months whether that passes or not. But it is an option and it is our largest generating, uh, revenue option for us. Another option is a scholar program. Um, some of you may remember back in two thousand twelve, we also did a, did open enrollment program. We did it for two years, I believe. Those students, um, were allowed to stay throughout their entirety of their, um, um, educational career, as long as they, um, met certain requirements here. We could look at a sixth through twelfth grade model, um, where there wouldn't be any stacking increases, that's where we have the room in our class sizes. So we've kinda given you some round numbers there, a hundred students would be eight-hundred-and-seventy thousand, all the way up to three hundred students at two-point-six million. So criteria that you could look at, you know, of course, we would not provide transportation, um, there's U I L guidelines applied, they want to participate in U I L. Um, we would look at disciplinary records and we would look at, um, their attendance rates for the previous three years. This is another option to generate revenue.
We talked to, was it Lovejoy?
Mm-hmm.
Lovejoy has a scholar program, so that's kinda where we just kinda talked through how they've done theirs. And they went from a tuition-based, oh, and they're moving away from that to just the regular state allotment because it just makes more sense for them. So they gave us some information on that.
How many students do they have, do that measure?
They have, they had, they capped each year, it's been a different number depending on their, their seats, so.
So they're taking the philosophy of get them in the, uh, building and then therefore let the state pay for them?
Yes, that's what they switch, they're switching to.
So they're rapid growth and they're adding rapid growth.
And so is that net?
Are you guys in favor of this?
It's two-point-six net is what you're just.
At three hundred students, yes.
No.
Well, we're, we're just trying to, we're trying to come up with revenue generation ideas. And we know that students, that's one of the biggest revenue generate, generation is, is students, so.
You're not growing, yeah.
Right, and so we, we're just putting everything out there so that, you know, when you're trying to look at, well, we're facing a four-point-six million, million dollar deficit. And we're reducing and trying to where we are and we still don't have staff compensation increase in this picture.
My, my fear with this is, yes, that might work year one, but then does this, would staffing increases be necessary for that same student the following year? You know, would that push them over, therefore netting is how?
It, it seems like putting a band-aid on a wound.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Sounds out of here, by the way. That encourages you or discourages you when you did open enrollment? In two thousand? It seems like two thousand twelve.
It was two thousand.
Same when you did a VADER.
It was, so it was the twelve, thirteen year school year and thirteen, fourteen school year were the two years that we had, um, the open enrollment options. And then we have still have students here, some moved into the district, some decided it wasn't worth traveling here every day and they didn't wanna move, but some have stayed with us. Um, most of them came from surrounding areas because, you know, you're not gonna, it's not feasible to travel two hours a day, one way and two hours back.
The biggest difference between two thousand twelve and today is you now, we now have communities like, like the one we're in now Canyon Falls. That is multiple school districts. I mean, they could easily just say, the, you know, the Northwest ISD part of Canyon Falls could say, hey, look, there's a elementary school right here. Well, opt in, same thing in Harvest, same thing in Country Lakes.
If you did that.
If you're not moving.
We're saying sixth grade. We're just talking about secondary, right.
So the elementary.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
The elementary would be difficult to manage to not, um, include, uh, staffing increases. We know, um, and Mr. Daniel can speak to this when we get to those slides on our class sizes at the.
That's where our largest room is too.
We have room in those without, without incurring any additional staff.
So this, this eight-hundred-and-seventy thousand and a hundred students, that's state funding?
Yes.
Any, have they discussed any, if we move to this, some version of this voucher program, are we gonna get their tax funding too?
Um, no.
Yeah, my answer.
Cause we're still public, yeah.
Can I ask?
We just, we just wanted to bring.
So what applies, the voucher program applies to private schools only or not?
Correct, yes.
Makes a lot of sense.
So, it's just an option, again, not every option is something that we're also letting.
So I appreciate you putting it up there, but I'm not.
Cause I'm, I, based on Mr. West's, we could probably fill those three hundred tomorrow because we have surrounding communities, right?
Right.
That, that the transportation barrier is net. My fear is we spill those three hundred tomorrow.
Can you, can you limit it? Can you, I know it used to be called LOE, now they've made it sound fancy, scholar, but can I cut it off at three hundred? Can I say two hundred first come first serve?
That's why we gave you different options, you could say a hundred, you could say a hundred fifty.
And even at certain grades.
Right.
Yes, you could say the first fifty in ninth grade, the first sixty in eleventh grade, I mean, you, yeah, you could customize that.
Hey, we have capacity.
We were just putting some numbers up there to kinda show what, you know, as, as, just as a conversation point.
I mean, I was just thinking about how fast growth we are and how we need room in a couple of our schools. And, you know, but for some reason the bond didn't pass.
When it passes, we're gonna have all, we're gonna be good, we're gonna be able to get our schools on the ground.
You don't, yeah, you don't know that yet, cause I, I can't see putting those extra kids in there when we're looking for space.
That's why we talked about sixth through twelve, cause that's where we have our lowest class size ratio that we all figured out, you know, through the study, the Mo Casey study.
This may not be an appropriate question, but if you had students that were spent and their cost is gonna be more than the allotment. You can't, you wouldn't be able to.
That's why we had on there where staffing increases are not required.
Okay.
So it would.
So you would just be able to tell them no?
Right, just depends on what the staffing requirement would be.
Okay.
He's shaking.
No, I'm not about your question.
Okay.
No, I just, I don't wanna see that as a viable option.
I know.
And that's why we wanted, we wanted.
It's financial only.
Right, correct, it is benefits. And it could be.
Two options, you're saying VADER over open enrollment.
I'm, I'm looking at how we're taxing our educators already.
Yes.
And we're talking about that.
Yes, and adding three hundred.
Let's add three hundred students to six through twelve.
So you're thinking VADER would be better, of the ones we've been showing.
If you're asking to pick between the two options.
I'm asking you to pick between the two.
The two options, yes.
Okay.
That's why we wanted to have all of them.
I could look into this a little more, a little more, you tired?
If you spread, if you spread three hundred students out over sixth grade levels per classroom, where I'm, I'm not trying to admit to you of it. But, you know, thinking about it like that, it's not a tremendous amount.
And my feeling, it's not the fact, I, I just think it's a trickle-down effect, but it, it looks good right there. And then you look at consequences that are unforeseen potentially that, I don't know.
Well, it just depends whether you're bringing in a higher proportion of sixth through eighth graders versus high school, where you're only gonna have them for two years, three years.
Right, if you had them just for two years.
And a lot of states trying to, trying to predict the next fall, do we have more move-ins than we thought? Therefore, would these people we will, that we've offered seats to push?
They would have to reapply here, they would, yes.
So what's the, so on a, on a situation like this, a program like this, what's the timing? When is it communicated, when are decisions made, when are, to his point, if, if all of a sudden there's an influx of students that come in over the summer. What's our ability to?
So it's really not something you can, like, it's too late now to start this process for twenty-four, twenty-five. But you would next spring, then you would set, based on your demographic numbers, you would set how many each grade level. And it's very clear in the application process that it's a yearly application renewal. And really, it's not until August, August four, I mean, sometimes you're, it's the first week of August because you gotta allow the time for what are your summer movements look like. Before you can renew that, so, you know, you have to, you have to understand that you could get a call beginning of August and says, okay, we have your application, but we cannot renew it at this time. We won't be able to renew it, we've, we've had, you know, the growth in this area, so.
It would be something we'd only start at the beginning of the year, we would start mid-spring.
Correct, you would have, yes, it would be one, one process, late in the spring, date opens, time opens, timestamp first, you know, there's a.
So, but that's different than we did it before. They came, they had the option, they didn't have to reply, uh, reapply every year, did they?
They did, they did fill out the forms every year.
We just.
They did, because they also had to go through their, they'd meet the guidelines every single year and reapply.
They were sitting in tents outside.
Which actually, that's, uh, you, having a clean disciplinary record actually provides so much.
Right.
You can, you can set the criteria for it.
For reapplication.
So the next one we wanna look at is the transportation pay-to-ride system. Um, there's some, you know, a couple of districts in the area that do this and we looked at those. Um, and we took, um, what we felt like would be the number of riders, so we did feel like our ridership would decrease a little bit if we did a pay-to-ride. Um, and so we settled on about a thousand riders just for estimates. And if you did a charge per student, what it would be. However, you do see a, a small allotment from the state for transportation. And if we're charging, we would lose that allotment, so you have to do the net of them. So when you start talking about the net of this, the amount that we would have to charge per student is pretty significant to see an actual significant difference in our funding. So again, just because these are ideas does not necessarily mean they're ideas that we're ultimately recommending. I would say if we had to charge six hundred per student, I mean, I, that's not something that I feel like we're comfortable recommending at this point in time to make a significant difference in funding. But we wanted you to know, we've looked at all areas, we've talked about it, these are things that we've looked through and investigated and tried to figure out whether it was right for our district or not. But again.
Basically, anything we have local control over, we're trying to bring just for discussion purposes.
What am I supposed to get optimistic about one of these ideas?
We're trying.
You started, it's.
I started, we're gonna get, I'll send this, I'll send it later on.
There were smiles coming, you guys were smiling. Laughing and smiling, not the same thing.
Hey, I was smiling about that one right there.
Smiled in March.
Okay, we're, we're making progress again. Now, I, I hate to make a lot of this, y'all, these are difficult, difficult.
Yeah.
But as far as where we thought we would be at this point in time versus where we're getting to, it's better than what we thought it would be doing, so.
I just echo with Mr. West.
So rental fees.
And that administration has been tasked with a very difficult process. All the while, if you're successful at this, Austin's gonna look at it and say, let's do something else with our eight billion dollars.
That is true. Right, so rental fees, we've talked about this a few meetings along the way. Um, we've reviewed all of our facilities that are available for rent, made sure that we had everything in line, consistency in pricing throughout the, um, all of our different facilities that would be available for rent. And we feel like that would be a potential increase of seventy thousand. This is something we've already implemented now, um, but we feel like a full year that you'll see that is about seventy thousand next year.
So that's happening anyway.
Yes, yeah. Um, so optional technology fees. So we, this was something that we had many years ago that was not optional, um, and to bring this back, it would be optional. Um, can we click on that link? Okay, thank you. Um, we're looking.
Yeah, several one, several one-to-one districts did. Yeah, several one, several one-to-one districts do, do this type of programming. They all, depending on the devices they have, it looks different. Um, but it is, it's a common practice.
It's basically where you can pay, um, you know, students, if you have a device all year long, there's, there's potential there for damage. Um, and so you could pop, you could go ahead and prepay for the, um, the actual insurance fee there, so, um, I don't know if you can make that a little bit larger, it's hard to see, but basically, it, we would be charging you a less, less rate for the year than if you opt out and, you know, you have a breakage, it has to be paid for later, it'd be a little bit more expensive, so we do feel like that's something that, um, could come back in and we feel like there's a potential for a small amount of revenue there for the district. Um, but again, it would give the, give the parents a little bit of a break that wanna opt in and pay upfront, um, versus waiting until that actual accident happens. Um, so we're looking at about seventy-five thousand dollars there.
And that's based on what percentage of opting in?
I think I was saying a hundred and fifty percent opt in, is what I estimated.
A hundred and fifty percent? I'm sorry.
About a hundred thousand, fifty percent opted in, so this is a little bit less than fifty percent.
Fifty percent, yeah.
So it could be.
Could be more.
Right. Alright, so our UOL participation fees. These were put, had to do a little bit of research here because this was implemented before I got here. Um, so they were started, uh, fifteen years ago. There's been no change in that price for fifteen years. Um, when this program was started, it was seventy-five per student, max hundred and fifty per family, it's still that today. Um, so we are looking at a potential change in that to a hundred dollars per student, max two hundred per family, um, with potential revenue, um, in, potential increase of about thirty thousand dollars.
You know, I look at something like this, not necessarily as a money grab or increased revenue, just common sense, you know? We had to raise prices just in general.
Yes, and we're trying not to make it where it's too many things at too many times, you know, it's, it's a twenty-five dollar increase that has for something that hasn't been increased in fifteen years.
Yeah.
I guess I look at it, I, I don't disagree that, you know, inflation causes things to go up, but I look at it a little differently, right? The fact that our legislature won't free up money, we're already paying our taxes what they tell us to pay and they continue to increase those, yet we're asking the families in our district to come out of their pocket more to, to deal with inflation, yet our own legislators aren't willing to deal with it. So you, somebody mentioned something about this earlier. I hope people are taking notice and they vote differently in the future. So when you come up with a hundred, two hundred, does that, when, when you're talking about you meet with all those other schools on these budgets, is that what they charge?
This is, uh, more unique to our district. I don't know another district that charges this fee.
Oh, really?
It's very unique.
Oh.
Very unique.
Ready with Josh. Geez, I stepped in that.
Move on.
We look at the cost of our tickets every single year, athletic event tickets, um, so this is not new for us to review, we always review these. And most of the time they're set by the districts that we're in, and obviously in our individual school districts, I mean, if you're in a, you have a seven, five A and I probably have the wrong number there, football district, the same thing for the rest of the UOL district. They set what the adult and student ticket prices would be and when you charge them. Um, but we look at, at the others, so historically, we've always allowed all of our students in to everything for free, um, except for varsity football tournaments and playoffs. When we started researching this, um, it brought to light that most of your five and six A districts charge the students to come in. Um, but you can do a pass, a lot of them do a pass where they buy it one time during the year and it's good for all year, so you're not buying a ticket for every single thing you go to. Um, so we looked at about twenty-five dollars per student, um, looking about twenty-five thousand potential increase in revenue. Again, um, this, you know, the total revenue wasn't, um, a lot there for the overall district. However, this did bring us in line with most of the other districts in the area, uh, when you look at the five A and above and, and how they, um, charge for getting in, into their, um, games. Uh, most of them in fact were quite a bit more than twenty-five, uh, per student. We just felt like starting out, but that would be more of a reasonable cost of what we felt like.
Coming to within.
Anywhere from forty, fifty on up to like ninety.
For the year.
Mm-hmm. So it was just something, um, again, this, this we would have looked at either way, um, just to make sure that we're in line, cause we review these every year. Um, enrollment versus attendance, this is just a reminder, right? Our funding is based on our student attendance, but we have to staff based on enrollment. Um, we can't tell a teacher, we're gonna put, you know, elementary teacher, we're gonna put twenty-four kids in your class, but we only think twenty-two are gonna show up every day, right? It's, we're, we're basing this on enrollment, so we work it down for you. Um, one student per day when they show up to, to be counted for that day is about forty-eight dollars per student, per day. Um, a percent increase in attendance rate is about four hundred thousand for, now, these numbers are only good for this snapshot in time, right? Every little change that we make changes our numbers, but just to give you an idea of what this might be, it's about forty-eight dollars per day per student.
And the reason we wanted to, to bring this kinda back forward is we're one of the few states left that are funded based on student attendance, right? And so most states are, are funded based on enrollment. And while we absolutely understand when students are ill, they absolutely should not be in school. We don't, we don't want them in school, we want them to take care of themselves and be at home. But when we have the option to take a week vacation the week before Thanksgiving because it's just, it's cheaper, this is what's happening to our state, I mean, to our funding. Um, and so those are things we just need to make sure everyone understands, because when you have that conversation with people, sometimes they don't realize, realize that. Um, and, you know, parents are gonna make decisions and obviously they have the right to do that, but we at least need to make sure everyone understands that every day a student is out for any reason is, is that much per day per student to this, this, the school district's funding for the year.
So I, I hope one of the positives that comes out of this negative is that there's a total revamping, that we have time to work with our legislators, hopefully Stuckey and Hayes and everybody to say, this is a, this is a pretty easy, basic change.
It just makes no sense why it's attendance based versus enrollment.
When we have to build our budgets off of enrollment, but we get our funding based off of what they attend.
Yeah, we're not hiring, we're not. We're not paying teachers hourly based on how many students are in the room.
Yeah.
And, and the attendance rates never recovered after COVID.
So. That's a takeaway that, I mean, it seems like. I'm hoping we could spend our time, we're talking about call to action.
Yes, it needs to be a legislative priority.
It just makes no sense.
And we have the time now. If they're not gonna take it back up in twenty twenty-five, let's make some of these necessary changes.
And our attendance rates are higher.
They are, they're higher than most, but nobody's recovered after twenty twenty, you know, even those that were sitting at the ninety-six and the ninety-sevens never returned to that.
Right.
So not only is our basic allotment set the same since twenty nineteen, our attendance rates have never recovered.
How close are we? Are we? One, one and a half percent?
We have our, um, before COVID, we would get as high as, uh, above ninety-seven for the, some years, some really good years, we'd have above ninety-seven. Um, now we're getting around ninety-six, um, ninety-five, just depends, depends on the year, it depends on where we're at in the year.
It's another twist to how you have to create a budget and it's a wizard game. We're also continuing to look at, um, our staffing and ratios. In grades K to four, like I mentioned earlier, we are keeping it at twenty-two to one in order to, um, reduce staff, we would have to jump quite a bit, um, as far as the number of students in a classroom and we don't feel like that's something we're, we're, we're willing to do if, if ever. I mean, grade, grade five, um, we are working at a twenty-five to one ratio and in order to reduce staff at that grade level, we would have to go up to twenty-eight, um, per classroom and again, that's something that we aren't looking at right now.
Mr. Daniel, if you'll hold on just a second, I wanna go real quick on K four, um, we are twenty-two to one in our K four classrooms. We've had two or three waivers that we've had to bring to you as a board, which is required to go to twenty-three and a couple, three classrooms across the district. I know someone asked me this morning because they saw it somewhere, that we have a third grade classroom with twenty-nine students, that's absolutely not correct. We're at twenty-two unless the waiver has come to the board. The last twelve weeks of school, we don't have to bring a waiver, um, but, uh, I don't, we haven't, we haven't had another one go over that, so I just wanted to make that statement, cause someone asked me that this morning and I said, no, that's not correct, so. We are, we are still at twenty-two to one and that's what we plan to maintain.
So fifth, in the fifth grade, you might see twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
And sometime, yes, or, yeah, and, and depending if it's an advanced level class, sometimes those higher level math classes are gonna have more students in them, you will see that sometimes. Well, I was in a classroom last week and there were more, we had, we were up on the closer to thirty, um, but it was an advanced level math class, so.
Ratios in K to five are, are easier to manage, um, but when you start getting into middle school and high school, you have all these, you know, different levels of classes and the class sizes, you know, may vary. So grade six, as you'll see in a minute, you've heard, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's running pretty well right now, it's right-sized. I guess I'll use the word lean, it's, it's, it's working, um, it's staffed really well. Of course, they always want, they want more, but it's staffed really well. Sixth, grade seven and up, there is room for us to, um, right-size those ratios. Um, the difficulty with that, that we're, we're still exploring, there's two, there's really two things. One, uh, first, we've been meeting with campus principals and Coach Rogers and Mr. Byrd and looking at, um, what kind of staffing that they need, is there something they can give up? I mean, quite honestly, one of the issues is we're in transition right now with, um, both of those campuses and principals. Um, but we are still meeting and looking at ways to, to reduce staff, like when somebody resigns or retires, we're looking at everybody's certification and trying to fill those positions from within, because there's room, um, on those campuses to do that with, with current staff. And so we're continually, continuing to meet with, um, campuses to, in evaluating resignations and retirements. I think the retirements are over, but we're still getting, um, a few resignations, but we're not automatically posting the job and trying to fill it. We're looking at what's already available on the campus and how can it be absorbed. So these next three slides you've seen before, this is the high school, um, averages per student, and if you just look at those first four, for ELA, math, science and social studies, you can see that that's where we have room. That's where we need to, like I said, when somebody leaves, an English teacher leaves, we need to see who else is English certified and can pick up some of those sections. And we're able to do that. There are some constraints and I'm gonna talk about those, and you heard a little bit about those a minute ago with content mastery. Um, so high school has room. Uh, middle school, you can see that they have probably the most room, they have the lowest in those, uh, for content areas as far as ratios go. And then sixth grade, like I mentioned earlier, it's the closest, um, at getting to twenty-five to one.
Okay, so, um, with the things that we've talked about today, here are some additional things that have happened. We had a banned resignation that we're not replacing. And again, as Mr. Daniel said, each one of these positions has been analyzed to determine whether, um, they could be absorbed and, and shuffled around. Um, we had some support services position, um, that we're gonna use, we'll have to use a consultant for part of that, um, but not replace the position. So it wouldn't be a full savings, but it would be some savings, um, going to a consultant. Um, we'd have one that was a considered teacher coach resignation that we're not replacing at this time. Um, on the librarian, um, we're moving the sixth grade center to JRE and using an A at sixth grade center since it is just one grade level. We felt like that was an appropriate move at this point in time.
And we've done that years ago at the sixth grade, it was an intermediate school.
Um, and then we've looked at the relocation of, um, two teacher coach FTEs and one A E FTE in the elementary PE and shifting those around, um, especially the JRE opening and, and moving some positions. Um, all of that right there is about three hundred and fifty-seven thousand.
And there's more to come with, from that, I mean, we're still evaluating positions.
Is, is the banned resignation in addition to the retirement or are they one and the same?
One and the same.
And as Mr. Daniel said, these changes on this will happen throughout this whole leading up to the school year, so this is just where we're at at this point in time, that, that will change all along the way, or has potential to change.
I, I will say that Coach Rogers and Mr. Byrd have come very willing to the table, knowing the situation that, that we're in and offering help.
Alright, so in the operations side, um, we've, uh, reducing two ground positions. Those have actually already occurred because there were openings, so we're not filling them at this time. Um, we've reclassification of some assistant directors in the operations department, so those, those departments will no longer have assistant directors with the exception of student nutrition, and at this point in time, student nutrition still funds itself. And as long as the general fund is not having to supplement the student nutrition, their positions will stay the same. And then we're still working on reorganization of administrative assistants with their roles and responsibilities in this building. That's an ongoing process as well, but right now we're at a minimum of a hundred and forty-two thousand and we feel like that, um, that amount is set to increase at one, so this point in time as well.
So based on those two items alone, we're now below two million? Fireworks?
So set of low enrollment electives at the high school, so this is a work in progress, but I do have um, everything that students have signed up for, for next year and working with Mrs. Knowles to develop that master schedule and see um, what electives that we potentially will not be offering or which ones that we can stack. And I'm gonna give you a fictitious class, cause I don't want any teacher saying, but she said that my class is, oh, if we had basket weaving three and basket weaving four, they could both be in the same class period and the teachers can provide some instruction to this group, get them started, then could provide some instruction to this other group so that we won't have to get rid of all low enrollment electives. So our goal is still there at the end, which is we wanna provide rigorous choices. We want choices for all students that are high interest, so it's not that we're going to a fair bones, but we wanna be smart about how we schedule it. Part of it is also like which classes can we meet the description of a CTE class that we aren't offering and kind of meld those together. We do have to be looking at teacher certifications and overall master schedule before those are finalized, but we're working on those things.
I do have basket weaving here, but.
I, I mean, it's a thing, it's just not a thing here.
Most certain was certain. Next you'll see that we've set ratios for principals, assistant principals and counselors. You'll see a column with current, as, as you'll see for every campus, there's one principal at every campus. Then the assistant principals, current, and then what's, um, we're projecting and plan to have in twenty-four, twenty-five. And based on those ratios, you'll see at the high school, um, it says two point seven would be our ratio and we're at four. So that may be a, a position that if somebody left the district, we would, we would evaluate and determine whether or not to fill that position. So one high school position, um, one assistant principal position, we're not saying that we're not having somebody back, I'm just saying that something will evaluate if somebody leaves. And the same thing for the counseling positions, our ratio, um, it's set at, um, five hundred to one and we're at five, where we only need probably four, maybe three.
And that's what I, when I'm talking about a staffing formula, that's a big piece of staffing formula, actually setting ratios so that you can make those staffing decisions as your, um, in, in terms of your administrative and, uh, teams at your campuses.
This was mentioned earlier as well during the special education study from Oak Casey, um, that we have some teachers who do not have a core content certification. In order to be, let's say, a special education teacher of record in high school, you can't just have a special education certification, you have to have more than that. You have to have a content area to go with it. If you're gonna be special education math, you have to have math and you have to have special education. So we've identified a handful of staff members who we are going to, um, require them to get a certification by the end of next school year. Because it limits what they can do, I mean, if you're only special education certified, there's, you're very limited in what you can do. This is just a breakdown of the positions that I presented earlier, the seventeen teaching positions, this is how they break out. You can see most of them were at JRE, there's two at South, three at West, one at the police department, and we're still looking at special education.
So, yeah, this is questions, this is probably a stupid question. But if you have a vice principal, a counselor position at the high school level that you're not real sure fits the ratio, why, why wouldn't you talk about reassigning them to a classroom?
It's a different contract.
Okay.
They're on an administrative contract versus a teacher contract, so it's a contract issue.
And their contracts, okay.
Yes, they're completely different.
Reconsideration for summer school offerings, so this year. Reconsideration for summer school offerings, so this year, we will be only offering summer school to two groups of students, that's our emergent bilingual students, it is required, TA requires, we offer that for students who are currently enrolled in pre-K and kindergarten. We'll still be making a few changes, such as no transportation will be provided. The other, last year and previous years, we offered a summer school for K through five, or K through eight students that were just teachers thought maybe a little extra would help, but once again, looking at research and data, that effect size for how that affects student achievement is extremely low. It's one of the lowest ones on John Hattie's scale as far as the effectiveness of summer school. So, we did use data to help us make our decision as well, that we'll only be offering the required. And then E S Y extended school year for special education services, transportation will be provided for that group of students. So, we're looking at a potential savings of fifty-eight thousand dollars compared to what we spent last year on summer school. We will continue to offer credit recovery, which is different than summer school, students are doing an online program if they did not pass. Um, the required classroom at school and high school will have the opportunity to regain that credit, so that's a little bit different, but that will still be in place.
And we're talking about using one campus for summer?
Correct, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, we'll be just using Argyle West, so as far as heat, heating and cooling, it's at one place. And our, um, summer programs that we offer, like summer camps, will all be housed as much as possible at the same campus as well, so that we're reducing our utilities usage.
Okay, so where, where it leaves us. So, where we started out was four-point-six, um, as of March, we had just under two-point-five, it did find its savings, and five-hundred-and-fifty-seven from, from this meeting, which does bring us down below the two-million mark. So, we're one, uh, just under one-point-six. And as we said, we still got some more work to do, and, and there's still things that could potentially develop, um, beyond, beyond this point. Um, and this does not include any potential revenue in there. So, what we need consideration for.
I think we have a question.
I'm sorry, so, Liz, in regards to the fund balance, where would one-point-six million in the fund balance take it down to?
Uh, percentage-wise, I will have to work that percentage for you, but I'll get that for you, um, fairly quickly as soon as we, as soon as we finish this. What we do need considerations for are some directions for the April fifteenth board meeting. Things that would actually, um, require board approval would be some of these fees, like optional technology fee, or the increase to the U I L fees. Both of those fees, um, are put out for available, uh, typically when we open up our registration, and that's intended to open March fir-, I'm sorry, May first. Um, so those would need a, a fairly quick decision in April board meeting for, if it were to go into effect for next year. The scholar program, as Dr. Harbinger mentioned, that would be really for a future year, if, if it's considered. And then the transportation pay to ride, um, if you do think that's something we need to look at, that's, that's not something that we intend to bring back to you at this point in time, unless you give us a different direction. But we also wanna talk about, um, direction for compensation plan increase at our June meeting. So, typically, in Argyle, we do our compensation plan in, in June. And as an example, we brought to you the cost of what it was last year. We did three percent of the midpoint in twenty-three, twenty-four, and that was approximately one-point-three million. Our study from Tazvie, which we're still doing this year, um, Mr. Daniel's been working on that, their, their information will be back until late May, correct? Um, not in time for the May board meeting, so it would be after that, but before the June board meeting. Um, we can do an educated guess, it'd probably be somewhere, you know, three percent would be somewhere, you know, one-point-five, one-point-seven, right? Just is best guess we have at this time, until they give us some information. What we're looking for is some form of direction on, um, moving forward in that, in that, those talks with compensation plan. I can tell you, we've been to every single campus, we stood in front of them, we've gone through the difficulties that we have, and what, what the reason behind the budget deficit, what our plans are moving forward, and the fact that we did not have a compensation plan, we were very upfront about that. That that was not included in our budget deficit at that point in time, and that we had a long way to go before we could get to the point of talking about that and discussing it. But we feel like we've made a lot of progress in that direction, and I can tell you, morale's low. You know, when we were working with other districts, it was, you know, nobody's giving a raise for next year, nobody could afford it, nobody was doing it. And things seemed to be tumbling, right? One district said, "Well, our board told us we had to, this was my own, we may do something, we may do something over here." So, there is a lot more discussions now about raises, um, throughout our area than there was when we started this a few months ago. So, we do feel like it's important that we discuss it and we talk about it, and we talk about some potential direction for that. It's nothing that has to be decided today, it's not on the agenda to decide today, but we do think it's important we start talking about it and letting you know what we feel like it would cost the district, for a, a three percent, we can always break that down into different percentages, right? But to give you kind of an idea of where that cost comes in. And then to look at our three-year plan. What we'd like to do is bring you the actual three-year plan in, in May, at the workshop. And what we'd like to be able to do is bring you a plan that says, you know, we, we know we aren't gonna have a balanced budget for next year at this point in time. Year two, we intend to be able to provide you with a plan to get to a balanced budget. And then year three is a rebuilding year. And so, that's the progression that we've made at this point in time, and that's where we feel like we could bring you a three-year plan. And when we started, uh, these discussions, and months ago, we didn't know that we were getting to that point in this, you know, that early. It might have been a, uh, year one was this much of a deficit, year two was this much, and then you maybe get to balance in year three. We feel like we can do that, um, in year two and rebuild a little bit in three. But, all of that to say, we felt like it's very prudent to talk about that type for a compensation plan, and what that may look like in our district, and the potential for, for discussing that further, um, for our staff.
Who, who's gonna go first?
Well, I, I don't, I don't think it's a question. I mean, our teachers are under-valued, they're under-paid. And again, like, we have a budget deficit of four-point-six million dollars, we take it down to two-point-six. And all the saving, almost all the savings we're actualizing.
Yeah.
We, who doesn't want to give teacher compensation? They, they've been through the wringer over the last five years. And, and again, like, it, it's unfair for, for us to say, like, well, we've gotta punt it back to Austin. But, man, if, if that's not the main target of all these tough decisions we're having to be, having to live through, like, so, again, having to know what, what's the fund balance look like, what's our, our fiscal responsibility to maintain that fund balance. You know, there are districts around our area who are refusing to pay Austin a certain amount of money that's required by law. And, and they're saying, "Go ahead and sue us, we're not paying you the money." So, districts are being forced to do wild things at, at the expense of education and our educators, so, I'm not speaking for anyone else, but I don't, I don't know that anyone's gonna step up here and say our teachers, uh, don't deserve more, so.
So, is year, year two balance, your, your three rebuild, does that include typical three percent in each of those years already?
We would, we would try and get to that point, yes.
So, I think, hold on, it, it's in there, or you're gonna?
We're still, I'm telling you, we're still working on the numbers, that's the intent of what we're bringing to you in May. So, it's still a work in progress, but our intent is to be able to build a average three percent in there, in those numbers.
You know, I think that, you know, when you follow what happened at, in Austin at the legislative session, I mean, almost all those bills had some kind of teacher raise part of it, some big, some small, and I think even down, you know, something is good, is, is eventually gonna come in terms of, uh, funding teachers. And we, since I've been on the board, we've given, we've tried to give raises every year. And there's no, I, I don't know, when I think, when I think about what's going on just outside in our world, and I look at what's happened to my homeowner's insurance policy, and my car insurance policy, and my, my grocery bills, and I think there's nobody that's been hurt worse than your teacher households, your two-teacher households, because those things are going up dramatically. And so, there's, I mean, there's like no more deserving population of a raise than teachers, and I would like to find a way to get there. I don't know how you get there without a V A T R. I mean, it's just, you know, I don't know how you get there without a V A T R. And, and, and the reason I say that is because the state had a thirty-four billion dollar surplus, and the reason they had, part of the reason they had thirty-four billion dollar surplus is because they weren't funding schools. They weren't living up to their constitutional obligation to, you know, the duty to fund schools. And so, they said, "Look, we got all this great money, we got all this surplus, because we've been taxing you too much, and we've been underfunding the state institutions like public ed." And then they say, "Here's eighteen billion dollars back," and I had a, I had a tax decrease in my, my bill, and it was, it was kinda nice. And, but I'm saying, the reason they have that surplus is because they're not living up to it. And so, the reality of that is, if the state is not taking our tax dollars that we're sending to them and funding public education, and they're actually sending it back to us in a different way, it makes the V A T R almost like what you have to do at the local level. You have to say, "Look, we have to have a V A T R, because the state isn't funding, fulfilling their funding obligations." They're sending it back to you in a different way. But the unfortunate reality, I mean, when they said that, and we got that, I go, "Well, yeah, they, they can celebrate, all our state politicians can celebrate, we gave you a tax break." But your local school boards are gonna have to say, "Yeah, but we gotta come get it."
To add to that, I, uh, was in a conversation last year about this time probably, with the legislature in a different area, not obviously one that's here. That very point is, the district itself was not utilizing all the pennies they had. And so, until you do that, then you can't expect the, the, you know, help from the state.
Got that question from several of us. Well, how many of the pennies have you used? And honestly, I didn't even know, but. So, but again, they wanna make the taxpayer pay for it, when it's their constitutional obligation. In a different way. So, I'm, I'm all for this, let's just don't pay them. Well, but, but I, yeah, we don't, we don't.
And I'd say that, don't put words in.
But anyway, so, I, I mean, I wanna find a way, my person, I wanna find a way, and I hope you can bring something to us. I just, when I look at these things, hey, I'm for increasing ticket sales, I'm with, I'd be fine with a technology fee, and you, uh, you know, U I L, I'd probably leave alone bus, I'd leave alone open enrollment, I wouldn't do, but the V A T R's the hard one.
And I would actually say, the open enrollment gives us almost the same dollar amount that the V A T R would, and it's.
If you had three hundred kids.
If you had three hundred kids, which is less than ten percent, well, actually, it'd probably be about ten percent of the six through twelve, wouldn't it, increasing? But if it doesn't affect people, like a V A T R would, I'm thinking if we wanted to give a, uh, three percent raise, we should probably do both. We should probably do both.
But you can't do the, the, you can't do the open enrollment until next year anymore.
It would be.
Well, you have to make a decision on the raise.
Did you say that we don't wanna offer it up to August?
Not gonna do V A T R.
Yeah, you could probably get, you could probably get a door, typically, districts have already, that are, that do that type of thing, have, their application process begins every once. So, we would just be, it would put behind some things, um, but I mean, we could, if that's something that more wanted us to.
I mean, I don't like the idea, but, but it's basically one-point-six million dollars that could be on the table, and it doesn't overfill the classrooms, that's what I hear.
So, I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, so, are, are we not hearing that, you know, there is crowding, you know, at our schools? There is traffic issues, and I'm not talking cars, I'm talking mobility of students.
Commentaries, the commentaries, cafeterias.
At the secondary levels.
Well, depending on which campus you're on, if you're in high school, going through the hub during the passing period, yes.
It's a tough point.
There's open spots in the middle school. So, if we're talking sixth or twelfth, it's not consistent across the board.
Yes. If you, I mean, maybe you sit there and you go, "Hey, maybe we get there through this May-June timeframe, where we say, hey, look, maybe the V A T R is the, the best option, and maybe not an ideal election season to go out for." But, and if, and then if that fails, then you implement open enrollment.
But that, you're talking about two years.
The V A T R.
Wouldn't we need the money this year?
Is there any talk in Austin, or, uh, I guess in, in other channels, that after the runoffs happen, dependent upon how the runoffs go, there, there could be a session called?
There's a li-, there's a little bit, but nothing, nothing firm.
I mean, what I, what I follow is, is that there, in, in the primary, that they were, um, your, your school choice candidates did well, and that your school choice movement is growing, and the excitement is building around , um, the fact that they now have, they, they've beat the incumbents that were against school choice, they now think they have, the votes are right on the cusp of getting those votes to get a big school choice bill. And what you hear, whether it's true or not, is that, um, now that they have a different, um, you know, representatives, that they feel like they can get a better school choice bill and a worse public ed bill. That the best bill public ed was ever gonna see was the last special session, and you should have taken that deal. And the fact that that got voted down, careful what you ask for, 'cause now you're gonna get worse.
And what we are hearing too, some of the districts that are talking about a compensation increase are also talking about a resolution that the board passes, that if the funding becomes available, then they release a three percent increase or whatever. So, some of them may be having a conversation and approving a resolution, dependent upon whether it's a special session or a V A T R in November, or whatever it may be, that, and that's, that's what we're hearing, is we believe, we, we value you, but the funding has to be released.
You said the V A T R revenue doesn't hit our books until, if you pass it in November.
It would be that fiscal year.
It'd be that fiscal year.
If you went ta-, your bill, your tax bills then would be adjusted for what was due in January.
So, it goes back to the start of this school year, or does it?
Well, if they're actually, typically, they mail them out in what, October, they would just have to recalculate them.
Okay.
Um, based on the, the tax rate there.
So, people would get additional bills for twenty, twenty?
Or we could work with the tax office sometimes, it depends on the mailing date tomorrow, if, if you've got a V A T R out there on the election. I think that we wouldn't know when you pass your budget, whether the variety was there or not. But the revenue, if the V A T R was passed, then that revenue is for that current fiscal year.
And so, help me understand, seven pennies, so let's say there was a V A T R, we would go out to get our, for seven pennies. My, my taxes would go up seven cents per one-hundred-thousand dollars?
That's correct.
A value, okay.
It's not point oh-seven percent, what do we say?
Point oh-seven.
Percent?
No, no, cents, pennies, pennies.
Seven zero cents, so every penny for one-hundred-dollar thousand is what your, what the tax increase would be, so.
So, times ten, if you have a million, right?
One-hundred thousand, it's a hundred.
I know, it's a hundred dollars, it's a hundred.
Per hundred dollars.
For hundreds, for hundred thousand, for a hundred.
Makes sense.
Seven cents per one-hundred thousand.
All right, so if you're, if you're.
So, I'm sorry, you're five-hundred and five.
It'd be, uh, you know, divide that by a hundred, and then multiply that by point oh-seven. So, it'd be three-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Annually.
Annually, on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar income.
And again, just.
On the open enrollment, just so we're clear, so we're talking about sixth through twelfth grade, because that's where we believe we have capacity to add students without increasing staff.
Right, 'cause you saw this, the staff averages, like, at the high school was like twenty-one.
Right.
So, we, we can go up to twenty-five, twenty-seven, so we can add students without having to add staff.
Well, and you could do it based on what you're saying with the capacity, right? You could take, you could set, you could almost do it by grade, right? Hey, we're gonna take this many in this grade, and only this many in this grade, that many in that. I just don't know how you build a budget around that, because you, you don't know how many are gonna come. And, 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 you know, so I can, you can, I can't sit here today and go, "Hey, let's, let's, let's give a three percent raise based on, we're gonna do open enrollment in twenty-twenty-five, hoping that three hundred kids show up."
Unless we tie it to, like, the fun, if the funding becomes available, whether it's open enrollment or V A T R. Or a special session, doesn't matter, or it's.
Yeah, I'd be fine doing something like that.
What, what does this do to your demographer's report, adding three hundred kids to the district? I mean, then.
So, what's, well, okay, what's the timing of applications? What's the timing you have to communicate that to the prospective recipients? And at what point are you blocking it?
So, if you wanted us to go for it, I would say that we would move really quickly and have that application available by May first, and start getting the word out. Then we would start, um, processing, give them a month, say, till June first to get applications turned in theoretically, and then they probably would not be notified until August first, if they had a place, so that we could see what enrollment, how enrollment grew over the summer.
So, I can tell, I, probably similar to you, I originally had a very negative reaction to this, this idea, it's like. It's like, we're growing too fast anyway.
You wouldn't have Josh here.
Why would we add to this? But certainly you got your thought, seriously. And do you think it's feasible? Do you think it's executable?
I think it's absolutely executable.
And I think we can write the criteria however we want, so we can be, I mean, to select, you know, to provide opportunities.
I mean, effectively, we're talking about fifty students per, if it's equally divided.
Yeah.
It's, if we can control that. And obviously, the yield of those at the lower grades will potentially be around longer, which we have to take into account.
And you most, most likely, you're not going to have your junior, senior level, because they're already in a GPA rate place. U I L, well, but if they play varsity, they can't play varsity anyway, because they have a year residency. So there's some things in there that can't just keep people from jumping just to go. I mean, there's, you're going to, you're going to see more on the sixth through ten level, grade levels, than you are the eleven and twelve.
How would that affect then in like sports and band and things like that? Because band starts in July. I guess they would just miss a couple of...
They may. If they're not coming for the band program, you know, it depends on what they're, and those would just be things we would have to, they would have to work for.
Did Lewisville ISD just pass the Vader?
They did.
Last year, right? And did they tie that to like raises or something?
So did Highland Park.
And Highland Park did the same thing?
Yes.
In these structures, we talked to that.
I mean, and there was nothing illegal or wrong about, they basically said, "Look, I mean, we want to give our teachers raises."
Yep.
And, you know, in order to do that, in this climate that we're in with public school funding, it's going to require a local tax increase.
That's how, that's how Highland Park advertised theirs.
That makes sense.
And the reason you're doing that, I mean, you got a tax break last year, you know? But they celebrated it as, you know, they did us a ball of favor, but they put a lot of pressure on the public school.
You can't ever reduce the pennies, right? Once you use them all, you cannot reduce them.
Yeah, but if you ever want to get them back in the next election, so you have to be careful about reducing after adding on. Just because of one year doesn't necessarily mean the next two or three years you wouldn't need them. I don't, I don't know that I've seen a district reduce it after it's been approved.
And when did, when did they put pennies into effect, obviously a long time ago?
Yeah, we've, yeah, we've got it.
Yeah.
Community presentation of forty-five minutes.
It was before, yeah, it was before two thousand twelve. I want to say it was six or seven, six or seven. I'd have to go back and research it.
Yeah, just curious.
So just really quick, so I know we need to get to a community presentation. Just kind of what we're looking for coming up is April fifteenth. Some potential revenue considerations may be on the agenda for you there. We've got the board workshop is on May sixth, and then we'll determine at that time if we need another workshop in June and/or July. But we're still meeting and reviewing this weekly and in trying to make progress and moving forward.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I think for all the time and effort on this.
Appreciate it.
Lots of hard work.
I do have a grid by the way.
I told you the numbers would look better. Decisions aren't any easier, but the numbers...
The numbers are great, but you said, "But wait."
I think it's only right that our staff realizes that we're to, we'll discuss potential compensation.
Alright, just adjourned five thirteen, five twelve, five twelve.